All right. Good evening and welcome to the Grafton School Committee. It's November 7th, so I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:01. Do we have any public comments tonight? Not tonight. Okay. We're gonna kick right off into our teaching and learning report. And actually, before we do that, we have a new member on joining our team tonight. So I'm just gonna have her say hello. Riley, do you wanna say hello and just introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Riley. I'm a junior at the high school. I play volleyball and I'm my class's president. And I'm interested in the fields of government and law, so I'm excited to be here and to be a rep for the school.
Great, welcome. Yeah, we were very fortunate to have three or two interested juniors this year. And we thought, why not? Everybody's so busy and more student voices, the better. So we're excited to have Riley join over the coming meetings. You might see two, you might see three. They're gonna work it out amongst themselves with their busy schedules. So welcome Riley, and we're glad to have you. Now, we're gonna move on to our teaching and learning report. And I am very pleased to welcome back to the school committee Jennifer Manion. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you.
So Jen is new to, new, returning to the district. Formerly was principal of North Street School, opened the school, and then moved on to curriculum, then moved away for a little while, and now is back. So we're glad to have you back, Jen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all for having me. I'm excited to talk to you tonight about what I've learned so far about our students' progress in my three months here on the job and to share where we think we're going in terms of the information that we have. So we're gonna start just with an overview of the spring 2023 MCAS information. And every time we look at data, we try to have some driving questions. So the guiding questions that we typically use are something like, what does the data tell us? What doesn't the data tell us? And what do we do with this information? And whenever we're working with data, I think it's important to remember that we typically instantly create a narrative in our minds when we're presented with information and visuals. So I think it's really important to always question that initial narrative and dig deeper, longer than maybe initially seems necessary. I titled this one Best of Times, Worst of Times, because some of you remember. So of course, COVID was incredibly challenging time, lots of barriers and hurdles, some horrific experiences for people, and we are still feeling the impact of that. But I think and hope that we're also still feeling the impact of the positives that it brought. I feel like it really brought us together as a community, supported, supported creative, innovative approaches to the work. And I hope that those things continue on, that those are things that we hang on to. I never thought in my career I would see an entire industry become first-year practitioners, but that's kind of what happened to us during that time. So it was a great learning curve, but I really value the way communities came together and worked through it and what we learned from it. So a little context to explain that previous chart in terms of changes in MCAS over time. And you have the report. I'm not gonna go through the port, through the report with a fine-toothed comb. I'm just gonna refer to it and take you back and forth. So this is all captured in more depth in the report. But 2022 was kind of pivotal year. It was the first year we returned to full test administration. Just a fun fact, our 10th graders hadn't seen an MCAS since 7th grade at that point. We need to remember that because of all the disruptions, our data is sometimes apples and oranges in terms of how useful it is and what we're comparing, what we're looking at, but still useful. 2022 was the first administration of the Next Generation High School Biology Test. The science tests have been revised over time. So we don't have a lot of comparative data in the science assessments the way that we do in the ELA and math assessments. And we'll take a look at that as we get further along. Department has always done accountability determinations. They halted those during MCAS. So that was resumed this spring. They typically use at least two years of data to make those determinations. So 2022 is the new baseline for our accountability determination. And taking a look at our accountability determination, state uses several factors and a four-point scale. So we're excited that once again, we have significantly outperformed the state in terms of meeting and exceeding expectations proficiency levels in relation to the standards. And once again, have been classified as not requiring assistance or intervention. Just a, oops. Oh, my slide is gone. There was a slide explaining. If you go to the report, there's a little bit more of a breakdown on page seven where you can see what those variables or measures are. So student achievement, student growth percentiles, high school completion rates, progress toward attaining English language proficiency, and things like chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework participation are all things that are used to determine that accountability determination or rating. So in looking at some of the statewide trends, these were shared with us in August on a Friday at 3:00. Go MCAS, riveting stuff. But there was actually some great information and, you know, sparked a curiosity to see how Grafton aligned or did not with what we saw in terms of statewide trends. So the first is that that decline we have been seeing seems to be remedying itself. We are watching that achievement side kind of rectify and head in the other direction. Science results are pretty much unchanged, a little bit of a decline, and you'll see that reflected in Grafton's results. Grade three for the state signaled a cautionary pause, just knowing those kids were in preschool kindergarten during COVID. So continuing to monitor the impact of that on their education. And we know we still have significant growth to reach pre-pandemic levels. And you know, from working with Dr. Cummings, Grafton's goal is to exceed pre-pandemic levels in terms of achievement and growth. So in looking at how Grafton compares, you can see in that chart on the right, significantly outperformed the state in every grade span. Go Grafton. And then in terms of the chart on the left, the ELA and math data indicate the achievement slide that began in 2019 has halted. So we have some bright spots in our trends and patterns. So we noticed that grade five in Grafton showed an increase in achievement, as did grade three students. So despite the state offering that cautionary piece around grade three and looking at the state data, Grafton are, it's a testament to the work that our early elementary teachers and families have done to make sure that that impact of the pandemic was minimized. We saw a little bit of a slide in our grade five literacy scores. However, we still outperformed the state in terms of achievement there. And we know we still have work to do to get back to where we were and to surpass where we were. So just a reminder, proficiency ratings, that 500 to 560 is the sweet spot that we're looking for when we talk about achievement levels. So meeting or exceeding expectations. Oh, these are the old slides, Jay.
Go in your drive.
Yeah. I apologize. I should bring my laptop in. So one of my compulsions and obsessions is working on slides continuously until the morning of. I don't sleep because of it, but.
Well, we like to preach flexibility and being able to pivot. So we're watching this live at home.
Okay. It's like, let me log in. Nope. Jay, do you wanna log back in? I'll just punt with those. They should be live in yours. Yeah, I think so. So as I was crafting the slides, the state came out with a new tool called MCAS Explorer, and it allowed for better graphics than what I had been using. So if you wanted to go to page eight in the overview report, what the next few slides are is just an overview of the trends at both the state level and at the district level. So starting with grades three through eight ELA at the state level, you can see about 42% proficiency in terms of meeting or exceeding the standards. And at the district level, excuse me, at the district level, you see, sorry.
Yeah, because we need you to be able to achieve. We'll have to figure that out. We used to do four across here, so.
Thank you. All right. I apologize for the interruption. She's gonna grab my laptop so we can pull up the slides from mine.
Yeah, and then you won't be able to see slides.
So state proficiency levels, meeting or exceeding for grades three through eight ELA, you can see is about 42%. And the important thing to notice about these graphs is they're not a 0 to 100% scale. The scale starts at the proficiency, in the range of the proficiency level. So if you just look at this from afar, it looks like, hey, you're doing pretty great because the lines were appears. It's just important to remember that they're just starting in the, in the range where the proficiency level is. So page nine shows grades three through eight, science, technology at the state level. See if, and that's where you see sort of that flat line piece of 42% to 41% proficiency rating. And grade 10 ELA, state level, thank you, Jay. You see at 58%. And. What's this room called, Jay?
Conference room.
Conference room. All right, we're back on track. Oh, my face is bright red. There we go. Nice. We're back. Okay.
Great, thank you.
So with state level for, and I disaggregated by grades three through eight and grade 10. Obviously, we can break it down much more. So if there's data you would like to see, I can break it out and give it to Jay to present to you, or I can come back, whatever you like. But you can just let me know if there's additional information you'd like to see. So ELA at the district level, you see a 54% proficiency rate, meeting or exceeding standards in 2023, which is up from 52%, not as high as 2019 when we were at 67%. Math for the state, grades three through eight, you see a nice incline from 33% in 2021 to 41%. For the district, even better, 47%, climbing up to 53% this past spring. STE is science, technology, and engineering. So grades three through eight at the state level, that's where we talked about that little bit of a flat line. You see a dip in one percentage point. At the district level, we see same district, excuse me, a dip in one percentage point. Grade 10 ELA at the state level, 58% meeting or exceeding. At the district level, a hearty 72%. So that's great to see that there's so much recovery that's happening by grade 10 in English. Grade 10 math, we saw a little bit of a flat line at the state level, and we see a nice little incline at the district level. 65% meeting or exceeding standards in grade 10 for math. State for science, grade 10, flat, 47%. And district, we saw a little bit of a dip, 4% drop from 2022 to 2023. So then we dig down a little bit deeper and start to look at our subgroups. And here's where it gets a little more interesting. I always think of data as like a mystery that's waiting to be solved. So this is where I start to get curious and excited and wanting to know what's going on. Obviously, not excited about what I'm seeing in terms of some of our subgroup achievement levels, but that creates opportunity for growth in our practice here in the district. So it's a little bit hard to see the colors. But the top piece is our students of Asian descent, the darker green, excuse me, darker green, and then the lighter green is students who identify as white. There's a line that, for the Hispanic subgroup and low-income subgroup are two very close shades of gray, but the low-income subgroup is the shorter line. Students with disabilities is the line that looks maroonish toward the bottom there, and then our Yale students below that. So those slides, this one and the previous slides, give us sort of a blush overview of our achievement levels, knowing it's just a starting point. We do much deeper dives in our department and with teams at each building, with administrative teams to figure out where the strengths are and where is the opportunity for growth. In addition to looking at achievement, we also know our growth data is very important. Really, we believe that every student is entitled to at least a year's growth, knowing some students have some gaps in their learning and may need more than a year's growth. Some students may come in at a high achievement level and stay at the same level. So we want those students to attain a year's growth as well. So our growth data becomes very important as we look at who's learning what. So for achievement, we think of point in time. And I think that's really important to remember about MCAS, because that is a point in time data point. There's a great anecdotal story about adults processing with a young learner, about why his scores dipped so dramatically from one year to the next. And he said, oh, it's easy. My underwear was on backwards. It's driving me crazy. And I always like to share that as an example of, this is one day, point in time, lots go on. There's lots of variables that go into human performance, so it's important to keep that in mind. But we do know that achievement is really critical to the post-secondary work. We want to make sure our kids are college and career ready, and it's an indicator of how we're doing there. We balance that by looking at the growth data. And that is individual to the student, comparing the student to their own prior performance rather than point in time with a standard. And we know how critical this is to student success. Measuring who's growing, who's not, and figuring out why, if we're being provided the same kinds of instruction, is really important, especially to look at those trends over time. You'll see the newly revised Standards-Based Report Card at the elementary level really focuses on that growth. We know that the standards are end-of-the-year standards. So it's gonna be a little bit of shift for some families to see, rather than an achievement level at a point in time when the report card comes out, it's really measuring growth toward proficiency at that end-of-year standard. So people might see a two versus a four or a three and feel very concerned, but that's probably right where most children should typically be in November of their school year. So looking at growth, I'm always fascinated by this part, and I almost am drawn to it more than I am looking at achievement data. So you can see here, the mean growth percentile for our grade 10 students in ELA was 53%, which you wanna be 50 or above typically in terms of SGP's. ELA grades three through eight, we saw a mean SGP of 50. This one's interesting to me. We saw a mean SGP in math, grade 10 of 43. But if you remember from the previous slide, their achievement was 65%. So to me, that's a place where I really wanna dig in and figure out what's going on there. So are we having kids come in high and kind of stay flat-lined where they are versus really seeing that growth that we wanna see? And math grades three through eight, our SGP was 54, and our meeting or exceeding expectations was 53%. So that's some tremendous growth in math at the elementary level. So it's another place where you wanna stop and dig in and say, okay, what's been happening in math? Why are we seeing this great growth? And how do we use that to increase achievement? So lots of ways to dive into the data, lots of depths we can dive to. The bottom part is showing a breakdown of a standard. So standard 3GA1, there were two questions on the assessment that dealt with that standard. You can see by the red in question number five, we scored 6% below the state. So you never wanna be at or below the state in terms of response. So that's one where we might dig in. My previous role here in the district, I was working with a team, and we're looking at something like this. You know, conversation was, well, what do you think happened? And teacher said, that's easy. We had so many snow days, we didn't get to it before MCAS. Okay, that's a great answer. We love those, right? But you can also see the second one, question 14, where we were above the state. And question eight in this one, 8% above the state. So lots of great teaching and learning going on. And then we dig into where we see an anomaly and figure those things out. The chart up in the top right corner is based on our DART data. So looking at districts with similar demographics, and you can look at lots of different entry points in terms of the data. Do you wanna look at per pupil expenditures? Do you wanna look at class size? Do you wanna look at number of AP classes that are ordered, available, things like that? It's nice for somebody in my role to have the DART data because I can network with assistant superintendents and curriculum coordinators and directors in those districts and support each other's work in terms of looking at the data and figuring out like, hey, it looks like your school really nailed it in this one. Tell me what you're doing and vice versa. So these are the things that keep me up late at night. So obviously, we do all this data analysis to come up with some plans to help us drive our decision-making and our action steps. So these are just some sample commendations and recommendations. There's more in the report on pages, I believe, 20... Sorry. Pages 20 through 22. And again, having only been in this role three months and having first round of data, a dive, I didn't wanna go too far or too deep in terms of what I was recommending. That work is work to come. But some sample commendations, Grafton Public Schools collectively scored above the state in all math standards. Students in grades four and six outperformed state averages for student growth percentiles, showing 68 and 64% growth respectively, which is outstanding. ELA grades four, seven, and 10 each outperformed the state averages for student growth percentiles. And science, technology, and engineering, each grade five, eight, and 10, those are the three that are tested, surpassed the state in the percentage of students obtaining proficiency. Some sample recommendations, conclusions we might draw from this. For ELA, explore additional data related to the writing standards and language convention standards to determine necessary enhancements to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Math, looking at additional data to identify how, when, where, for how long a standard was taught. So for example, that one we looked at that was in the red, where was it in our map? How do we address it? Do we need to change anything? And then something that's being talked about at the middle school is the idea of unleveling math, particularly at the seventh grade, because we, right now, are deciding in sixth grade someone's pathway in mathematics. And we know from brain research that the brain is malleable, and somebody might not have it yet. But there's lots of benefits to working with peers and having mixed ability groupings. Science, we potentially might explore additional data to look for an increase in phenomena-based approach to instruction and performance tasks in terms of assessments. But that's the kind of work department and I will be doing amongst ourselves with administration and with teaching teams as the year continues. Any questions on the part we just did? I'll keep going. Great. So in terms of what's in the works at the state and district level, we know curriculum is dynamic. So when I started teaching, there were no frameworks. And once they were implemented, they tend to have a lifespan of about five years, and then would be revised and updated based on neuroscience and performance. It's been a little while because probably of the pandemic. So we haven't seen the updates to the ELA and math that we would expect. We have seen some changes to the science. So a big one is the health and phys ed standards. They haven't been addressed in 25 years, apparently. So we have had an opportunity to look through those standards, and they're pretty robust in terms of getting information to kids that they need. We know social, emotional, and mental health is so important, that learning in addition to the academic core content barriers, so. Last year, the Civics field test was a pilot. This year, it is required for all eighth-grade students. And Grafton has been selected to participate in the STEM pilot this year. We had an opportunity to choose, we're gonna have 50% of students participate or 100%. So my understanding is middle schools decided to go for 100%, which I agree with. I think it's tighter and cleaner. And this is pretty exciting. They're shifting to illustrated storyline about real-life science phenomena. And then there's interactive simulations where students do all kinds of experiments and things like that, as well as a selected response item. So I think that this shift is one I'm in favor of because it reflects where we wanna go more in education, more interactive, more open-ended, more critical thinking, and finding ways to assess those things. In terms of what else is in the works in the district and why, we are piloting four different programs this year, two in math at the 7 to 12 level and two in ELA at the K-26 level. And we're also looking at placement practices at the middle school for math. This is an older graphic from Hattie's, but it fit on the slide, I'm not gonna lie. The newer models are a little long. So in this, I'm not sure the year of this one, he's updated his research a little bit because it's expanded. But you can see in terms of why are we piloting ELA and piloting math, there's a lot of research around what a high-quality instructional program does for learning and for teaching. So we're looking into getting those resources in teachers' hands. And there's a lot of research around what was once called tracking leveling classes. So you can see Hattie rates things according to impact ratings. So the higher the number, the better the impact on learning. And you can see ability grouping here, it's a 0.12, it's actually down to a 0.09 at this point in his most up-to-date research. So it's not that it doesn't have any impact positive, but it's so nominal. And when you compare it to the other things that are high-impact, that can only happen in a heterogeneously grouped classroom, it doesn't seem to be worth the benefit of that ability grouping piece. And we know that we don't wanna set students on a pathway at the end of sixth grade, that they're, we, we know that that's not best practice, so. So those are some exciting things that we're exploring and working on. In addition, I think personally, and what I will bring to the, the role and to the district, is I put various book covers, things I've been influenced by in the past couple of years. So in terms of data's, excuse me, Grafton's becoming much more data-rich, we introduced the STAR Benchmark Assessment, I believe, last year. So we have big data, MCAS, we now have the Benchmark Assessment that's common. So it's allowing teachers and teams to engage in collaborative conversation around student achievement and student growth. So getting a more formalized process for inquiry cycles, so that that's just part of how we do business at Grafton. We're always in some stage of an inquiry cycle, looking at student learning to see what's working and what else needs work. This one's an interesting one to me. The premise of this book is that some of the initiatives that we do are best practice, may have side effects. So like medications, they work, they're helpful, we need them. But you also have to be very mindful of the side effects, so that while we're doing good, we're not also doing some harm. So making sure we're creating students who are high-achieving and showing high growth and also enjoy learning and coming to school and are seen as whole people. And most recently, I was impacted by this approach to utilizing data. So in my experience as a teacher in the classroom, we tended to focus on big data. So we would get our MCAS scores, we'd spend hours and hours and hours and hours creating individualized plans for students based on the MCAS scores. And then we'd spend tons of time implementing those plans. And it would be hard to tell if there was a result. And if there was, was it from that work or was it something else? So it seems like if time's our biggest, our greatest resource, it could be time better well-spent. And I think the idea is that big data drives those big questions, but how do we funnel down and make sure we're getting a full profile of the learner? So spiraling back to those original questions about data, what does each level of data that I'm gonna show you tell us? What doesn't it tell us? And what do we do with this information? So with this approach, we're looking at large-grain, big data, the state-level data. So things like MCAS, SATs, access tests, overall attendance, things like that. So we always say, big data drives big questions. So it should set you on this exploratory path, but it really shouldn't be used in isolation and standalone. So we combine it with, or triangulate it with, this medium-grain benchmark data. And I'm, I'm taking the book and sort of making it fit to the work that we're doing and my understanding of what works best. So some of this is paraphrased into my own thinking and understanding. But this helps us identify, we're always looking, when we see... But this um, helps us identify, we're always looking, when we see strengths and when we see gaps, we're looking to see, is it an instructional strength or gap, or is it a learning strength or gap? So if it's a large percentage, it's probably an instructional piece. And if it's a smaller percentage, it's probably a learning piece. And that's important data, but still doesn't tell us enough in terms of decision-making and, and deciding what to do. So the premise of this book is that really this, uh, the authors call it the street-level data. Is imperative to triangulate with those other data points. So it's never, we're choosing one. It's always, we're looking at all and using all to drive our decisions and figuring out, do we have the information we need? Do we need more? What I really appreciate, appreciate about this approach is um, I use this approach in my previous role, is it allows uh, lead, people to lead up. So teachers can notice patterns and trends and bring that to their specialists, their interventionists, their coordinators, their principals, uh, people like me, curriculum people. And then there's a Japanese approach to education where you treat it like a science experiment. And we all own the experiment, so it's not judgmental, critical of you in your space. It's the space is the lab. And we're all supporting each other and figuring out how to make this work best. And I really like this approach to using data because I feel like it's conducive to that kind of collaboration around the information, what we're seeing. So engaging teachers and consistently using data cycles that uses all three levels of data will be an important piece of the work. And I really liked this piece because I really believe this. Um, I think it aligns with my own philosophies. I think data can be humanizing, liberatory, healing if we use it the right way. It shouldn't be a gotcha. It shouldn't be the D-word. Um, it really should be, rather than a gotcha, like, I got it. This is what I think. Let's try, let's explore and see. So that brings me to the end of the MCAS presentation piece. Any questions, comments, concerns, anything you'd like me to research further and get back to you on?
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the committee or something?
I have two questions, well, commentary questions. One, um, my, and obviously, this is one perspective because I'm only, my daughter's in fifth grade, so she did, was in fourth grade last year, and she did MCAS. And um, when we got her scores, we looked at them and talked about them. And she really felt, she told me very, like, very openly, my teacher has made a point to let us know, we're not teaching you to this test. We are not, like, we are teaching you to teach you. And we know you'll do well on the test because we've taught you well. And that just, I don't know if you've ever read uh, Diffen-Duffer Day? It's a fabulous book, if you haven't read it, but um, hooray for Diffen-Duffer Day, I think is the full name. Anyway, but essentially, it's like the focus of bringing joy and, and happiness to learning.
Right.
Learning is the, is the goal, not the test.
Right.
And they're doing well. So it's sort of like, you know, the both together really made me feel very happy. Um, but the other question I had, and I've always sort of felt this way about this kind of data. It's like, we look at our tenth-grade data and we're like, oh, we were here before and we're here before. But I would love to see, like, the kid who was taking, like, our tenth-grade data, where were they in seventh grade? You know, like, comparing those two, because those are students, obviously, the teaching, they're getting pretty much the same instruction. But I, especially with the pandemic, these people were in different places. And it would be really interesting for me to see how that trending is happening from like the same, relatively the same group.
Yeah, I agree. And Jay and I were having a conversation earlier because I feel like a big piece of my work is um, to identify who are these people?
Right.
Who are these children, rather than numbers? Let's start talking about kids and using their names and figuring out, like, celebrating the growth and the achievement that we see and then figuring out what the barriers are and breaking those down. Because really, all this work with data is really about equity and inclusivity. Um, and making sure that everybody gets a great education.
Um, these two things don't necessarily specifically relate to MCAS, but you kind of brought them up, so. Just gotta ask.
Go for it.
So the first thing, and this is more of a comment than a question initially. Um, you mentioned sixth-grade math and reassessing the assignment there. And I'm, I'm really excited to, to hear about that because one of the concerns that I have are kids, you know, sixth grade is so much different than fifth grade. And maybe they struggle a little bit in sixth grade, that's, and then they don't get into pre-algebra in seventh grade. They can't make it to calculus. And maybe they need calculus because they decide to be an architect or something, but, you know, and, and that's something. But to, to have them sort of limited by sixth grade, you know, just
Right.
is heartbreaking. So I'm, I'm glad to see um, that's being looked at, to see what we can do there. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, and this just maybe, I thought of this question as you're presenting some of this information, some of the ideas that you had about curriculum standards and things. Is there um, is there any guidance about um, hours spent in the classroom on electronic devices versus paper versus hands-on learning? Like, are the, I, I could look this up, but it just occurred to me during your presentation. But are there, are there standards or are there, either in this, in our school district or um, some guidance that you have?
I don't, I'm not aware of standards or um, procedures that have been discussed in terms of protocols and time allocation during lesson plan design, things like that. Um, but I did start to have dialogue with um, some of the high school staff and middle school staff. Partly because we're pi- um, we're piloting the math in seven to twelve, so people are looking at digital resources, paper resources, what we were given from the companies to work with. So teachers are finding themselves standing in front of a copier, copying lots of pages because they feel like it's really important to do the paper-to-pencil work. So we know that there's a component of learning in the brain where paper-to-pencil, that physical kinesthetic piece really supports making it stick. We have to make sure what we don't hear is that means we have to do the workbook pages. It can be any form of writing. So we're using, if you, there's a great book about the thinking classroom. And the idea is a math room should have whiteboards, because there's something to standing up, talking to people while you're writing that is incredibly powerful to learning. So I think we have to be, it's that ask-five whys, right? So why is writing important? Is it really that the worksheet is important, or is it the physical act and learning in the brain? Um, so I think that that's the direction that we're really heading toward, Liz, is to figure out what's it look like. Right? Yeah, you're welcome.
You are. Uh, I want to go back to the breakdown of the different groups within and ask, do we know what? First of all, how are we characterizing um, students with disabilities? Uh, is it students with IEPs versus five, five oh fours? And do we know what percentage of those students take the MCAS? Um, are we generally building a school community that encourages kids on IEPs to take the MCAS? Or how are we using that data?
Yeah.
Um, in their individualized education.
Take the MCAS. Um, if they receive modified curriculum, they might do an MCAS alt, which is a portfolio version.
Which is not uh, which is, does not count for the graduation requirement, as I understand it. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know for sure?
I, I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I would say ninety-nine percent of our students have probably taken the MCAS or participated in an alt. Um, typically, it would just me and a family opted out if they didn't.
Okay. Um, do we know what percentage are doing the alt versus the traditional?
The alt's usually a very small percentage. I don't know the number offhand, but I can get that information.
Yeah, I was curious.
And we tried to disaggregate, disaggregate five oh four from IEP, and I could not find a way to do so. Doesn't mean it's not doable, but I couldn't find a way. I would like to, because sometimes a five oh four is just a health need.
Right.
Um, but to be continued on that one.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Our students?
Um, I completely agree with you with the math leveling. I see it like with people I know and like, it really can like discourage people from learning and people thinking they're bad at math when they're really not. Maybe they just didn't pick it up a certain way.
Mm-hmm.
And like, learning in sixth grade is so much different than learning in middle school and high school. And some people excel, but then they can't catch up.
Right. And I think if you align with current research on learning in the brain, we know the brain's like a muscle and we can strengthen it. And we know now they think developmentally, we're not reaching adulthood until twenty-five, so brain, brain grows in spurts, not the same pace as everybody else in the classroom. So I feel like our goal is to create, if we do have a pathway, there should be onroads and offroads throughout the school year, so that we're not held to a certain track and, and unable to change lanes. So that's the goal.
Riley?
Um, I was just wondering, so um, in sixth grade, I had a similar experience. Um, and then from, I think it was seventh to eighth grade, I moved up of math class. So I was in like intro to pre-algebra, and then I went to algebra one. So that was definitely a weird experience. I was just wondering, how would it be if it was a combined class together? How would you be able to choose when to get to high school?
That's a great question, Riley. And I think a piece of it, sometimes we use placement criteria. Um, but I think also there has to be a piece where there's student voice and family voice. Um, because data, achievement data, might not show you or paint a picture of you as ready, but you might be ready. So I feel like everybody should have the opportunity to try, and then we'll figure out what to do if it's not where you need to be. So that's the onroads, offroads part is can you adjust? If we find that to be true. Yeah, good question. All right.
Any other questions on MCAS?
Sorry.
No.
Um, so I'm gonna segue into a quick overview of my entry plan. Um, and I landed on the image of a house. And you can see at the bottom, the foundation is the people, which I truly believe. I think the students, staff, and commu- parents and community members are how we build a great district and how we really maximize teaching and learning. Uh, the next level um, is a graphic from the Innovator's Compass. It's an organization that offers lots of strategies and solutions for getting people to be innovative in their thinking, um, to collaborate and iterate through tough challenges and, and big changes. Um, so I always think of myself as an Unsticker, because that's work that I love to do. And you'll see at the center of their image is starting with the people. So again, the foundation is the people, the center of that circle is the people. Um, and going from there. So I think you'll see my entry plan is kind of built on those things. It's gonna be one of those things where I like dream about all the things that went wrong in my first presentation at school.
Don't. Just don't, just don't let it go.
I feel like I should have like There we go. So I have a great mentor, Laura Friend, from the Shoba Regional School District. She's a super, assistant super there. Um, so she was very supportive in crafting this plan and in crafting my MCAS overview, so I really thank her. And she taught me this great little tech tool. So I know that you've seen a copy of this entry plan, but just wanted to quickly go over some of the highlights. Um, I love that quote, after you've done a thing the same way for two years, look it over carefully. After five years, look at it with suspicion. And after ten years, throw it away and start all over. So the picture next to it is from a fourth-grade classroom, one of our amazing teachers who is piloting the Witten Wisdom Program, which is incredibly rigorous uh, for student minds and for teacher um, workload and management. Um, teachers are learning a lot while they're trying to use it to teach kids. So believe it or not, what that picture is, is a vocab lesson. So if you think of how vocabulary was traditionally taught, write down the definition, use it in a sentence, let's take a quiz. Um, so these children are in a module that is studying the heart literally and figuratively. A lot of vocabulary is related to terms that are associated with that. So these kiddos are actually illustrating with their bodies the chambers of the heart. So if you think about how much thinking, higher-order thinking goes into collaborating with peers to create an illustration with your body of the chambers of the heart and be able to explain it to everybody else, um, I love it. And they were using terminology that I had a hard time pronouncing in some of it. So in terms of um, goals and outcomes, the first goal is a comprehensive curriculum review and enhancements. So these are gonna be things that I'm digging into this year, learning as much as I can on my first year. First year, you try to lead, listen, and learn. Um, so a lot of learning for me before I can do the leading, a lot of learning and listening. Um, so curriculum is typically, you're in a five-year cycle with curriculum, so we'll initiate that cycle. Timing will be perfect because we'll adopt the resources from the pilot. Um, so we'll get the training and, and be, and um, I'm just excited about that piece. And we'll look at science and social studies and other things as well, the health standards. So we have guiding questions for each um, portion, and I won't read everything to you. Um, my second goal is around professional development strategies. I feel like time is always our greatest resource. We have a wealth of expertise in the district. There are times when we need to bring the outside in. Um, this year, I was fortunate to work, walk into the work that Tracy Kahlo and Steve Wilshire had already done in terms of planning out PD for the year, um, which has been fabulous, very thoughtfully done and well-implemented and executed. Um, and then next year, we'll be looking at how we continue to align PD with district goals and needs and best practices, learning in a modern context. Data-driven decision-making. Um, I think we've always used data to an extent, and I think really it's using those three tiers skillfully moving forward and engaging in inquiry cycles so that everybody understands the process and it doesn't feel like an add-on or an initiative. It just feels like the way we do business when we talk about students and learning. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Integration. I love this graphic because of the center. Um, I do a lot of work with teams around the difference between being included and belonging, because I think belonging is the goal. Um, so how do we get there? So looking at everything we do. Um, it's fortunate because we're in our TFM review, our tiered focus monitoring, and we're doing a self-assessment, starting with the leadership team, which will extend to all stakeholders. Um, so lots of great work to come there and building on the great work that's already been done. Uh, looking at tech integration and digital literacy, um, boy, I did not think in my career and in my lifetime I would see change as rapid as what AI is bringing to education. I was a high school and middle school English teacher, and when I learned about ChatGPT, I just had this moment of what would my job be right now, if I was still in the classroom? So supporting teachers and figuring out how we support the learning with these new tools, they're not going away. They're new tools. So how do we use the tools? Um, knowing, I heard this somewhere, that the message to students is always, you will always be smarter than the tools that we use. So how do we use them skillfully? Um, and really, how do we use technology to not only enhance teaching and learning, but transform it? Because I think we have that potential now. Uh, looking at feedback and evaluation processes, how do we get feedback as a department, as a district on our practices? Um, do all stakeholders have a voice? If not, how do we capture that? Uh, looking at priorities and efficiencies, I feel like the efficiency column really is the technical leadership components. And the effectiveness column is really the adaptive leadership components. So looking at both to see how we can fine-tune our processes. So we're doing some of that right now in terms of our financial uh, components of the curriculum and staff development department and how we spend and how we track what we spend. Um, alignment of future trends and needs. So we work in a research-based profession. We're always learning more. Um, we know with um, progression and evolution of technology that the job continues to change and shift. But we know top tiers of blooms, top tiers of webs, depth of knowledge are going to be the tried and true. We need to help students learn to do their best thinking. Critical thinking skills, so that no matter what the tool is or the task, our students can think and respond and meet the needs wherever they land. Quick timeline, um, a lot of this work is already underway. I've had great meetings um, with my department and with building principals. Um, Jay and I have committed to getting into buildings as often as possible. And it's great when you have a partner in that because one of us will inevitably go get the other one and be like, let's go, step away from the computer. Um, and it's been just such a great opportunity to see what's happening out there, um, how skillfully the work is being done. And uh, I don't know, it looks like we have happy kids. I was in the middle school today looking at their faces, like, ah, these kids look great. Um, so in the spring, I'll look forward to reporting out on the findings from the entry plan um, to you. And please check in with me anytime between now and then. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jen. Any other questions about how the work Jen's doing and are about to do?
I would just like to know how we can actually read that, because I'm not finding it in the drive and it was hard to see.
Oh, I'll share it with you then.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
I'd love to read that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific. All right. Thank you so much.
Sorry about the snaff, it was totally my fault.
It happens all the time.
Don't even give it another thought. Great to see you. Thanks for everything. And uh, yeah, we'll see you soon. Okay, and then we get to talk about budgeting.
All right. Um, so over the last two weeks, we completed all of our building-based budget meetings where we, principal, assistant principal, some other staff. where we, principal, assistant principal, some other staff come in, basically go through a budget workbook to go through their entire budget for FY twenty-five. Out of that, this is a maybe the lowest in a decade. We had four requested positions. LPN for Grafton Middle School, they have a full-time nurse at the middle school, but we just have an unprecedented number of students across the district and we're seeing this everywhere. With medical needs and medical plans that require just an unprecedented level of tracking throughout the day. Uh, so that was requested. The request was put in and there's an obvious need to maintain the new ELL teacher position. Uh, we had it originally, you might recall, last year, we went into the summer expecting to to fill a coaching position at the middle school. So we had that money and that was encumbered, that position was ready to go. A person left the district and at the same time, we had an influx of students, uh, English language learner students into the middle school. So where we just had a couple of kids, we went up to double digits within a couple of weeks. So we shifted the position and we're, obviously those students are still with us next year. Um, and those numbers have even actually grown since we filled the position. So we would need to maintain that position. And had a request for a grade five teacher, integrate six teacher at North Street Elementary School. This is really e- really early in the process. They're great requests, I put all four in front of you, but the way it does work every single year is we have movement among students. Uh, we have to look at everything over the next few months, K-12. And that gives us a sense of what we'll have for class sizes. So we may very well historically, most of the time, we can cover additional general education class needs by taking, say kindergarten, we have a low number of enrollment. Instead of letting that teacher go, we make some internal moves and we cover it, cover that need internally. That's most likely what's gonna happen. But I wanted to put it before you. So those were, right now, that's all we have for FY twenty-five. Uh, we aren't gonna talk about, I can answer questions, but we're not gonna dive into the special education um budget quite yet. We'll put that off until December. That's, I don't know why I put it near the front end. That's always one of the last, even in December, that's super early for special education. Something else that's significant that we need to keep in mind, you've probably seen this reported uh as every district is struggling with it, that the very end of the the third iteration of the ESAR funding closes with the end of FY twenty-four. So back in FY twenty-two, we received ESAR three funding, that for us was just about six hundred thousand dollars. And that's for staffing, for whatever the needs were, and they were, they were great, obviously, with with COVID and coming out of COVID. So we wisely didn't spend it all in FY twenty-two. We tried to stretch it as as far as we could, because we had ESAR one monies and we had ESAR two monies um still remaining. So there are four positions currently for FY twenty-four that we fund with ESAR three money. Obviously, those money, money, that money is gonna disappear at the end, in end of June twenty-four. So for FY twenty-five, we're gonna have to absorb a little over two hundred seventy-six thousand. Does that make sense? Okay, so some of the bigger districts are dealing with this at a huge scale, where we're talking millions. So far, I haven't heard of anything being done by the state, we're we're going to hear about it. Uh, most districts tried to utilize these positions for nursing, for men, uh, positions related to mental health, adjustment counselors, et cetera, which is both of those things we did. But many of the same, same needs, it's a little different, but the same needs we have aren't dissipating. So that's gonna be a challenge for us. And that's what I have for staffing.
Any questions? Liz?
So just to clarify, so you said nursing and adjustment counselors, is that the, for these four positions, is that?
Yeah, I mean, you could really label them any way you want it. I didn't wanna put them on there thinking, I'm not losing sleep over it at this point, but I didn't want somebody in that position to see in the news and go, oh, my gosh.
Yeah, of course.
I'm doomed. Um, so they're placeholders, but that's what it was. Nursing and uh the the adjustment counselors for us is the big thing. We expanded pretty significantly, which is great, we're covered K-12, uh, first time ever. But it's gonna be a challenge.
Any other questions? And then the, just to clarify, I know you said the special ed budget was coming. So does the four positions would not have included any kind of paraprofessionals as well, or is that some?
Nope, they're all professional teaching positions. Oh, I I brought that up, sorry, I should have given it context. On the agenda, I had put special education budget.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Right, no, I understand that, maybe I asked my question wrong. Have you, so have you looked at needing, will we need any additional paraprofessionals beyond the four positions listed? Or did that already get listed, or already looked at and you're thinking, we only need four? A lot of times, we often need to hire more paraprofessional positions, so it's not just four positions that we're looking for? And like, has that been looked at yet?
I probably wasn't clear. These four positions were simply tied to this funding source.
No, no, okay.
That's going away, we're gonna keep the four positions.
Yeah, we are not. Those positions.
Yep.
Have you?
I've, I finally, it's, I'm a little slow tonight, I get what you're saying. Right now, in beginning of November, we don't anticipate a need for additional special education teachers or paras. That said, we are so early, even December is super early, is what I was trying to get at. So that without a doubt, in May, we could have students move in, we could have a whole host of things happen that would impact us in terms of the budget. And that's, every year, that's a huge challenge, because that horse is out of the barn, we've got the budget more or less set, and then we have a change in May. But as of right now, nothing to be added.
Thank you. I will not dare to ask anymore.
Feel free to, I was thoroughly confused.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
Anything, anything else, I'm sorry? You wanna stay there?
It doesn't matter to me.
Or you can, wherever you wanna do it.
What topic's next?
Next topic is the MCAS ballot initiative discussion.
Okay, I don't have much to report on that, but I will.
I would just wanted to set this, the stage, I guess, so to speak. I think what I'm, we're looking for tonight, or what I, when we put this on the agenda, was to really talk about if the committee is going to take a position on this or not, so we would really wind up wanting a vote on either yay, nay, or nope, we're not taking, we're gonna stay. And this kinda came from some of our, one of our members advocacy towards this and also we had a uh community member outreach to us at our last meeting. So we put together just a, I mean, Jay put together just a very quick um overview of what the ballot, we're not here to talk about what's on that written, we're not, um, that's not why we're here. It's mostly to, does the graph, are we supporting it and do we wanna write a letter or something in favor?
Can't read that at all.
Can you?
I didn't wanna talk, I was really interested to hear what everyone else had to say.
Okay, well, uh, I'm sure.
Did you have anything to say?
No, I'm happy to, um, I've all I did for the good of the committee was pulled off um the two pages that were found on the state the state website about petitions and provided that, but I didn't have a presentation for the committee.
No, nor should, okay. Amy first and then?
Sure, so um so I don't wanna make any assumptions here. So I want everyone to know that the petition is in support of the Thrive Act, which is a bill that is currently in the Joint Committee on Education. So this, the state and the the senate and the representatives, there's a joint committee on education. That's where that act is sitting right now. They had an open meeting at the beginning of October where they took testimony and feedback from the public. They have not moved forward with anything yet. The petition is in support of that legislation, which could sit in committee and not go anywhere. It could move out of committee and be voted on, and then there's really no need for a ballot vote at that point. Or it could go and fail. And then the ballot vote would be to tell our, our people in Congress, hey, no, we want this. The three things that it's seeking, replacing the MCAS graduation requirement that allows students districts to certify that they have completed coursework showing mastery of the skills, competencies and knowledge by the state standards. It's eliminating state receiverships, there are currently three districts in the Commonwealth that are in receivership, which means the state took them over due to underperformance on the MCAS and other factors. And there seems to be no end in sight to what that means. So if Grafton were to underperform, the state could come in and this would, it would take a long, long time for this to happen, because we're doing really, really well, but I just want you to let, let you know how this works. The state comes in and they take over the school district and they're running things, but nothing is getting better. Scores are not going up, kids are not doing well, teachers are upset and quitting, it's a bad situation. The third thing it would do is to establish a commission to create a whole new, whole child system of assessing our schools. Not kids, but schools, because that's what the MCAS was originally designed to do. It was too, you're nodding, because you know, you guys are smart, you know. It wasn't created as an achievement test, it was created to evaluate how well we're teaching. How is the curriculum working? Is the state framework good? We've gone a little far down that that other road of achievement. And people will often say, well, we have to have the MCAS. The federal government requires it. The federal government requires a statewide standardized test, that is true. They do not require it to be a graduation requirement. There is no minimum score required on a federal level. There are eight states that still have this requirement in place as of right now. And I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be blunt and probably overly political when I say, I don't want Massachusetts in the company of these states. We're better than this. Florida, Illinois, Louisiana, Massachusetts, New York, Texas, Virginia and Wyoming are the states that are still requiring that minimum score. I don't know that it's appropriate for this committee to take a stance on the petition so much as I would like to see us take a stance on the Thrive Act when the time is right. I don't know when that will be. And that's, that's my piece.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Liz?
No, I don't have anything to say yet.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, I just said, I I was coming into this discussion, I was really interested to hear what everyone had to say. And then there was a lull and no one was talking, saying anything.
Oh, got you, I got you.
I was waiting to hear.
All right, anybody else have anything to say? Liora, do you have something to say?
I am not a fan of the MCAS uh score graduation requirement. I think um it can discriminate against a lot of different populations. It is definitely something personally, outside of my work in the school committee, that I am um signing petitions and talking to people about, because I think, um, you know, I asked Jen earlier about participation of our kids with disabilities. I think that's one population that is negatively impacted by um this requirement and there are other ways to show mastery. So uh, I'm in, I was very interested to learn that there are only eight states that do require it. Um, I thought it was a more widespread practice. Um, so clearly there are other ways to show mastery and um, you know, I think some kids get tracked to not graduate for, from high school pretty early in their careers that, and and that's not right. So that's just my perspective.
Could I just throw out one more fact? That I neglected to. Students who do not pass the MCAS after repeated takes, so they they don't do well in 10th grade, they can take it over and over and over and over and over again until there's some, some end date that they, that's it, you're done. They receive a certificate of attainment that is not accepted by any college or university in the country. That is effectively the end of their college education, or their high school education, they they can't go any further than that. Seven hundred students this year graduated but did not get a diploma in the Commonwealth. And I think that's too high. I think if they complete the requirements set by the state and the requirements set by their local district, they should get the same diploma as everybody else. And if that allows them to continue on and go to college, great. But at least they have that diploma, they they walk in graduation and they get the diploma just like everybody else, because they've done the work.
Rebecca?
Thank you. Um, I also think it's interesting, we were looking at the MCAS data and when we had that chart with the delineated groups, it's also sort of saying, there's, like, we're looking at that and showing that there's specific populations that are much less likely to get, to graduate, and I think that's a big problem. And we're, we are trying to figure out what are, what's causing those issues, but if we're saying these, these kids are probably just not gonna graduate, then that's or significantly less likely, just based on demographics, I think that's a big problem.
I think
Go ahead, I'm done.
I think too, sometimes things aren't well-understood, like the alt, the MCAS alt. I think there are parents um who do choose that for their child, not necessarily knowing. Sometimes even not all the staff at the school know that that doesn't count towards the graduation requirement. Um, so you could take a third grader and put them on a path to not graduate from high school. That seems extreme, um, you know.
Okay, um. Did you have, I'm sorry, I don't need to keep.
Not yet, I'm still just.
I'm sure Megan does. You guys have anything to say?
Um, yeah, actually. What I find really frustrating about MCAS is not necessarily like, in theory, like whatever, you have to take a test to graduate, it's the way that like, they go about it, like it's, because in elementary school, we're told, this isn't a reflection of you, it's a reflection of the teacher.
Our teaching.
And it's also, even in high school, the students don't get their scores directly. Like, I don't even know my scores, like, it's kinda like hard to get, but then it's also a graduation requirement. So it's like, don't worry about it, but then there are people who do have to worry about it. And it's just like, it's very like, interesting, like, it's not something that like, they tell you, you should be studying for this. This is gonna impact your life in some sort of way. This, I know some people can like qualify for scholarships, they do well and like, a lot of it is just kinda like, just take it and don't think about it, but then it can actually have a really big impact on people. And I think that, that, even if they don't get rid of it, that just needs to be articulated very clearly and explicitly of what it means for individual students and their futures.
Riley?
Um, to add on to that, I thought earlier, the seven hundred students who received the certificate, I don't um, I don't agree with that, but something that I was a little confused about and just wanted a little clarification is, um, if the graduation requirement is removed and the students don't really have a motive to do well on MCAS, how would that reflect in the data? So would we be able to rely on the data that was taken out? Because I feel like there are a lot of instances where students may not necessarily um perform like as well on that. So I was just curious about like, how would that impact our research, if that makes sense?
I mean, I think, well, I mean, I don't know, this is pure speculation, but that's only looking at the 10th grade. Like, the rest of them, people take them regardless and it doesn't really impact them, so I would think it's be a, I I would think it'd be a small percentage. I mean, you know, it's hard to say, and now I'm, I'm a little confused, Amy, on what we're, what we're even really talking about. I mean, I know there's nothing in place now anyway, so um, you know, um, but if we wanna just try to do some advocacy or anything on it, um, you know, I think it's just ridiculous. I mean, I remember when we were going through the parks years ago and I was in some discussion about it and they were talking about the summer, Somerville schools that had the big sign like, go get the MCAS and how people were so crazy and then we tried to replace it. I mean, this stuff is, it's great data, we we heard Jen Manion present, terrific. She also said it's a day in a life of a snapshot and that really stood with me. I mean, to tie graduation to one day in somebody's life and, and I, you know, and it's, I know a bunch of, you know, people are impacted by it and you're doing all this work for 12 years and and I, you know, and it's, I know a bunch of, you know, people are impacted by it and you're doing all this work for 12 years and you ma, you've managed to pass and people take different paths. I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's nonsense that it should be a requirement to graduate. I think tests or these are terrific as a piece of a evaluation system and it should be one of many, many. But I'm not in charge of any of it, but I would certainly always vote to kind of get rid of that just requirement of it.
If I could just answer one part of your question.
Sure, of course you can, yeah.
I think the, the way I feel about it is that it's like the star testing. Right? It's another day and another, another snapshot, another piece of the puzzle, more data to inform us, not high stakes. Do teachers pressure you now?
No.
Are they, are they, are they pressuring you in 10th grade and saying you need to do well? Are they telling you what's a graduation requirement?
No.
Yeah, I think, like, I think I found out that bio was required to graduate, like, right before I took the test. Like, I think, I was like asking my teacher and I was like, what is this for? And she was like, if you do well, you're, if you don't do well, you're gonna have to retake it next year. But like, it was just very like,
Big.
Yeah. But like with star testing, that's kind of like what I would imagine like MCAS is like kind of trying to do where it's like, you don't get your score from star testing, like, it's not really like direct, but then it also, it also doesn't really impact you. So it's like, it's nice that like, everyone's getting the data, but it's not like harming the students.
I remember in like 10th grade, we had like one, like 10th grade English, we had like a day before MCAS where we like, did like a practice MCAS. But I remember all we were told was, like, the teacher was like, oh, like, we're doing this so like, you can get a scholarship, but like, it wasn't like, oh, like, you're gonna not graduate if you don't do well. It was more like, oh, it's like a benefit if you do well.
I'm a carrot rather than a stick.
Right. And I might guess, venture to guess, it might have been the, you were probably in an on.
Yeah.
You probably, you know?
Yeah.
So it might be a different conversation depending, and not to make judgments. But, so, I mean, and you can't study. I mean, what would you have done, Megan, if you had known? You would have worried, right? Like, what would you have done?
I, I don't know. I also like, I felt like especially with English, the standards, like, when it asks you to write something, it didn't really say what they wanted you to write and how they wanted you to write, because like, with essays and stuff, usually like, you're taught toward a specific standard, like with AP exams, they tell you, here are the points of the rubric you need to hit. And no one went over, when, no one went over that with us, so like, you kind of just were like writing, you didn't really know what you were supposed to say.
Well, I think that speaks to what the MCAS is measuring versus the AP English.
Yeah.
It's measuring something completely different. It's measuring your reaction, how you're synthesizing everything you've learned without being coached.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
And that's something.
I know it's off putting, but.
A school can't really help with that.
No.
So like, I don't know.
There are many problems with the MCAS.
Riley has, Riley?
Oh, I was just saying, like the problems with the MCAS, I feel like there's definitely a lot of like negativity around MCAS and something that people all of a sudden, it comes to that time of year and everyone's all of a sudden stressed out. And then people who don't, are in a bad case on that day, who aren't feeling well on that day, just, it's just one day and I think it's, makes it really difficult to just measure, like you said, your whole high school experience. So I definitely see that. And I see with the star testing, it feels more of like, oh, that's just where I'm at right now. It doesn't determine anything and in that way, I feel like it measures way better because personally for me, I'm much, I'm not very stressed about the star testing because I feel like it's just representing my actual learning, if that makes sense.
We also do more star testing. It's more of like a comprehensive, because we do it multiple times a year, so it's showing like that, like sort of growth. It's not just annually or, we don't even take MCAS every year at high school.
Right, you're done. You guys should be done at this point. And we heard from Jen that what, her goal is to look at the child behind it. Which is great that we have people in our district. So just trying to, I'm just kind of, like I said, I'm a little confused, so if any of you want to guide me. We have a few things. I mean, and none of this break is on. We don't have an initiative yet. It's in committee, which we know could take forever, but it's getting a lot of publicity. Obviously, every time I go to the grocery store, somebody's asking about it.
Nobody ever asks me.
Really? Oh, I've only signed once. No, I mean, they asked me to sign the petition.
Oh.
Yes, you can only sign once. And people do ask. So, and, and again, I don't, if you want to jump in, Liz.
You're welcome. No, I, I mean. I've, I've sort of, I, I, thank you for everyone, your comments, because I really, I didn't, wasn't sure how I felt about this going into today, so I really wanted to listen and assess and digest what everyone had to say. And, I mean, I have the same question you do. What, what, what's next? What do we do? But to me, this just comes down to the purpose of the MCAS was to look at the school and the school's performance. And how can we deny someone a high school diploma when they've done the work, they've met the other requirements? When, if we're assessing the school, then it's, maybe it's a failure of the school. So it just, that doesn't seem just to me and that, that's sort of what it comes down to for me, based on what I, you know, but, what do we do? Like, I, I don't.
What's this conversation about?
What's this conversation about?
Really dumb. I feel like this is a dumb question. And I'm just gonna ask it and I feel like I should know the answer. Like, who checks? Like, who makes the decision? So let's say John Smith fails the MCAS in 10th grade and Kevin Carney decides that John Smith's getting a diploma and he has a high school diploma now. Like, is there a decision that we can make as, like, do we lose, I know you're shaking your head, but like.
It's a horrible idea.
Yeah, there is a real process that we really have to adhere to.
I, I said it was a dumb idea.
We didn't have anybody last year not graduate because of MCAS, but we have in the past. And each individual is in one of the subgroups that we've discussed.
Yeah.
Kind of painful to watch. You retake that test that you, for whatever reason, you can't get over that hurdle. It's just, it's really frustrating on, on, on everybody's part. There's nobody on the school side, certainly on the family side, that takes any joy in, in the whole process. We do, we go from Kevin in our staff, we go way above.
Of course.
And beyond for students who have already left us with that certificate of attainment or what, you know, they walk and everything, but we still offer tutoring. We do a lot of work to get over that hurdle and we've been successful, but it's a tremendous amount of, of work and stress for those families. I wish it was as easy as, I mean, if we could, if we had that leeway and just, ah, here's your diploma. That would, that would be awesome.
It'd sound worse than that. You guys can see me behind stomping for your fake diploma.
I'd love to do it.
Counterfeit. All right, I'm gonna drop that because I don't want to keep talking. I don't want to keep talking about that because one of my dumber thoughts. Okay. Really, thank you. Thank you. It's been a rough couple of weeks. I'm just trying to help.
Can I clarify something I said too?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to say if, if one kid doesn't pass that the school's, it was a, I said it was a failure of a school, but I just mean, in, in terms of the way the state wanted to look at this, that it's, it's a, it's about the, the school and what they're doing and, and their, their scores, not that if one, if one or two or three kids fail, that the school has failed. That's not what I was trying to say.
So it sounds to me that we all agree that we, that the MCAS should not be a requirement to graduate, but right now it's not really ready for us to, there's not much we can do about it. So if somebody maybe says to us, how does, like, John Stevens two weeks ago came, we can say, we agree, but at this point, it's a process and we're trying to do the best we can to get everybody, shepherd everybody through it. Is this a fair? Can we wrap this up?
Should we take a straw poll just to make sure that, I mean, I, I think I'm assessing the same thing you are, but just to make sure every.
I would absolutely love to take a straw poll.
Like, yea or nay, if that's.
Did you bring straw?
I, well, I'm from Ohio, so I probably.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, how about, does anybody disagree with what I just said?
Oh, sorry, I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
Is there like the data for the people who have to like retake MCAS or don't graduate? Is there like any way of measuring that or like, is that something that you ever do?
When, when you say that, you mean on like the macro level, knowing how many students didn't? Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, a hundred percent. Yeah. And a, as I just mentioned, zero in 23. Thinking, COVID, I'm, I'm not sure, but i- if we had one, if we have one, it's a, it's a big deal. I mean, we're talking about it before the first retake. I mean, that, that's a situation that we, of course, are gonna do our very best to work with the student and the family to get over that hurdle as quickly as possible, but yeah, we're definitely aware. And the families are aware and they're aware of the supports in place to help get over that, to pass. The sooner we have that conversation, the easier it is for everybody.
So would it be like fair to say that it's not a huge issue at Grafton specifically?
Yeah. In terms of sheer numbers, absolutely, but I think you'd agree with me, even one student's one, one too many.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I can just chime in real quick, and you may not be aware of this. The minimum scores have gone up as of the class of 2026. Just putting that out there.
That was my question. So what are the scores and like, who determines that?
Desi determined the.
Yeah, Desi.
Yep. I don't have them on me. I could Google, but my computer's being really slow.
That's okay.
Am I worried that my own child is not going to pass? I am not, but I am concerned for others. And that we could start seeing more statewide. Because part of our job as school committee members is yes, to focus on the Grafton public schools, but part of our job is to advocate for education and schools.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. But I think for the purposes of the discussion tonight, that was a nice theoretical discussion. And I think you, you still can always reach out to your representatives too, though. I mean, they're fortunately in a position that a little bit more above us. Okay, thanks Jay for that. Thanks, everybody, for your thoughtful thoughts on that. Thoughtful thoughts, thoughtful discussion. And we're gonna move on to capital planning.
All right. I just wanted to give, we don't have a completed capital plan to put before you. I'm gonna give you an update on where I stand with it. As you know, we're working to create a new five-year plan for the district. We have six schools, six hundred and, just over six hundred and ten thousand square feet of space, so that's a lot of space. We have, and always will, I'm guessing, have way more projects than we have funding. I'm trying to group the new plan in, into basically three different categories. Ongoing projects, many that have been kind of on the list for a long time. Projects related to ADA audit. The ADA audit, which had lots and lots, millions of dollars worth of projects to make all of our schools more ADA compliant. And then I separated out large-scale projects, which we haven't done in the past. They've been basically just baked into the, the larger plan as a whole. So far, I've been using four hundred thousand as my criteria to go into the large project category. Those projects are being set aside. We'll, we'll still keep them a part of the plan, but almost all of those are gonna need, need to be funded from outside of the typical capital process. In most years, we, we've historically received on average about five hundred thousand dollars a year for capital projects. In meeting with the town administrator, he believes it's just an estimate that we might have as much as five hu, uh, excuse me, as much as eight hundred thousand dollars for FY25 and from FY26 and for the foreseeable future after that, about six hundred thousand. So those are rough estimates that we're using for this plan. So I'll just go over, this is the spreadsheet that, that I'm utilizing. Off of this spreadsheet, each one of these projects would have at least one page, if not numerous pages, that's gonna have photos and a breakdown of what that project actually means. This is in your school committee book as well. It's rough, it's developing every day. I've been trying to chip away at it. What you see in the blue on the screen and in your book are things, projects that we need either new estimates on or updated estimates. So they may have been in the old plan in the, we've used whatever that given number is for the past eight years. I can guarantee you that number is not gonna be the same and it's gonna be larger. So I want to have as much updated information as, as possible. So in terms of the combination of the ADA projects and the standalone smaller projects under four hundred thousand, right now, about four and a half million dollars in total. The larger projects, those over four hundred thousand, the ones that jump out are the two turf fields, in particular, the stadium field that even though it was only built or installed one year before the upper field or the, the, the field outside of the stadium. The way it was, the type of turf and the way that it was installed is very different and it has much less life than the second field, if that makes sense. The stadium field, it was stitched and I can go into it, but they, it, it's going to be, need to be replaced in the next couple of years. We've taken great care of it on a regular basis, at least quarterly. We have a company come out and work on the field. So we have, since day one, I think, treated it exceptionally well, but over, it, it had a 10-year warranty. And by 26, 27, we'll be looking at 14, 15 years and it's gonna need to be replaced. Repointing at North Street Elementary School, beautiful brick school, but if you get really close, you can see that the bricks are spalling and it, it needs work on the exterior for sure. Generally, every school roof that we have and every school roof that I've ever been associated with is lousy, needs to be repaired or replaced. That definitely holds true in Grafton. Our biggest need is at North Street Elementary School. We replaced about a quarter of it a few years ago, probably five, six years ago now. The other three quarters is in need of replacement. Not an emergency, but in the next few years, it's something that's gonna have to be done. So to wrap this up, I'm working to prioritize, get the whole list, break them down, get updated estimates. And then the, the first thing we have to do is figure out what's gonna be prioritized for FY25. We should have, it's good practice to say, oh, we'd like to do this in 26, this in 27, this in 28. That, that's a good exercise. It's important, but FY25 is really, that, that's gonna be here before we know it. So we need to get those projects defined, funded, and then the sooner we can get to work on them, the better. The summers, people think that the summers is, I fall into the trap too, like, summer's coming, oh, well, dude, all these projects, it'll be great. It's really like two months and we've got summer school, we've got stuff going on. I think we did exceptionally well with the HVAC at the middle school, but that definitely reminded us that we want to have, in that, we started the day after school let out. We want to replicate that approach for all of our projects this coming summer. And updating the new estimates. And we hope, myself and Frank Rothwell, hope to have a completed new capital plan before you, potentially by the next meeting, but definitely by mid-December. Any questions?
Liz?
Hate to harp on the field thing, but I've just, I've gotta know. So the lifespan, so what, what happens to the field when it starts to, does, does it literally just start to fall apart or what, what would we expect to happen after 27?
You may have, with, with maybe your kids going around to other districts. I can remember this at Auburn High School, going on to their turf field and it felt like walking on this carpet. It was like, it seemed super thin, all those little, I don't remember if they had the coconut husks or the black pieces, but they were so close to the, the tip of the grass. It was like green cement is what it looked like. They've since replaced it. What happens is, that was a stitched field, so over time, the stitching just becomes looser. It just gets wear and tear and becomes loose. When it becomes loose, those little black pellets, that there are a billion of them.
Yeah.
Settle.
In my mudroom, yeah.
And with that, we apply more black pellets. And eventually, over time, there's nowhere for it to go. And you end up, it's just gonna get harder and harder and harder. That stitching technology, even though it was just one year, they don't have that on the second field. They're all glued. And they do it in pieces as to, as opposed to one big hole. We're still gonna have to replace it eventually, but it's, the technology is just so much better in that second field that we've got extra years that we don't. Extra years that we don't have on the stitched field. Um, it's probably not the greatest explanation, but for this, for the plan. I'll have that broken down on a page that actually, like I saw a little illustration of how that worked, I had never thought of it before. But that's what happens. The grass doesn't, the artificial grass doesn't shrink, it's everything else just gets built up.
Any other questions?
Do we have any, how's the, this kind of ties into this, but just. Well, how's the HVAC, um, process going at the middle school? And are we going to have to put any more money into that, or is that, that's, that's good, it's?
It's good, uh, the project officially, uh. There's an official legal term for it, but wrapped up or, or, has closed as of this week. Uh, so we now move into the, the phase where everything gets inspected and signed off on, et cetera. But it is done, there's one, one remaining thing that needs to be done and that's, um, tied to the air conditioning, not the heating. And that's gonna be done, um, by, where no huge rush, but, uh, before the start of twenty-four.
Alright, thank you so much, and you can stay there and give your superintendent report.
I only have two very quick things, in terms of wrapping things up, I simply wanted to thank, uh. The CPC for their tremendous generosity in funding the South Grafton Elementary School Playground. We, we finalized that process, CPC, I believe, had a meeting to kind of acknowledge the completion of this project last week. So, um, it's wrapped up, we have a couple, we need to put a plaque up in recognition or in naming the. Playground after, um, Mrs. Parker, a few small things, but overall, the kids are loving it. It's been great for the, the school and the community as a whole, so thank you CPC. And then I'm shockingly excited about the potential to compost. I don't know why, but I've been really into it, um, we've talked about it for a while, we finally, we have an officially. Entered into a partnership with, uh, Black Earth Compost, but, um, definitely heading, uh, very much down the road of. Uh, bringing it to the committee for, for consideration, um. They work with some area districts, they work with about a hundred schools statewide, the closest to us is Westboro. I talked to the Westboro Superintendent today, they had a wonderful experience with them, love them, was the quote. Um, which fit in with all of the discussions I've had with Black Earth. So basically for about ten thousand dollars a year, money, all of which would come from our lunch revolver fund, which is to the good. And can unfortunately only be used for things related to, um, to school lunches and breakfast. Um, I wish we could use that money for everything else, but, um, so in my mind, it's very short money for them to come out. And pick up unused food. Uh, eventually, all of our schools, if we enter into a partnership, I doubt we'll start all six schools all at the same time. My initial guess is we'd probably start at the high school, middle school, um. The districts that have had real success with this, a lot of them have like clubs or used students, especially the older students. Um, to kind of take it on as an initiative, a lot of the, the work and probably the biggest challenge for Black Earth. Has been keeping that, the compostable material, like keep trash out of that. So, um, having students go down and high school students talk to the middle school students, have middle or, and or high school students. Go to the elementary schools and talk to kids about how it's cool to recycle and all that stuff, that coming from kids is pretty powerful, so. Uh, meeting with Jay Cody, who's been pushing for this since the day I met him, uh, tomorrow, to talk about that as a topic, so. Um, I'm excited about it and I hope at the next meeting to announce that we've actually entered into a partnership. And that's all I have.
Great work, thanks, any questions? Liz?
I'm very excited about the compost, um, is, we, in part of this partnership, would the school be able to get compost back? So like at the North Street Garden and the, and GS Garden.
Yep, Millbury Street Reach Out, yeah, definitely, which is awesome, you see it obviously come full circle, so.
How big are the bins, are they like recycling bin size?
Yeah, a little bigger, um. I haven't seen the ones that they put in the actual cafeteria, and then those are used to obviously fill the larger bins. Um, but those are full-size, they, they look to me, I've only seen photos, um, a little bigger than the ones we use in town for recycling. But that's same exact idea. You guys must have questions, nothing?
Well, we're moving into their student report, so.
Oh, perfect. Alright, thank you.
What do we have tonight?
Okay, um, the football team won their first round of playoff games, the first day we won the state. Um, PSAT and SAT scores were released. And APUSH and AP Gov are planning to go on a New York trip, May sixteenth and May seventeenth.
And then, um, we have parent teacher conferences, uh, tomorrow and Thursday. And then because of that, we get, uh, school off on Thursday and then we have Friday off for the holiday.
Um, on November first, college early decisions and early action applications were due, so a lot of seniors submitted their applications. Um, there's no school Thursday or Friday of this week, and then there's the class of twenty twenty-four is hosting, uh, Crafton Vendor Fair, like each year. And it's from ten to three on November eighteenth. And then is that, is there anything else you have?
No, I think that's it.
Great, alright, any questions for the students? Alright, well, thank you, if you guys wanna leave, you may, if you wanna stick around, you're welcome to. Um, but Riley, welcome, thanks for all your questions, everybody, and, um, yeah, thank you. Have a good night, drive carefully. Future agenda, schedule planning. Feel like we have a lot coming at us, this is when it gets busy, um. Let's see, um, we're gonna have. We haven't, we missed a couple, cause I think Thanksgiving week, so it's a little wonky. Yeah, which is good, cause it'll give us time to prepare that preliminary twenty-five budget. And then we're gonna have, uh, Mrs. Krapaska come in for the, uh, SEL update, Jay, is that still in track? Um, okay, and we'll possibly talk about special education staffing, but it seems like that's gonna probably be December.
Do we wanna keep the same, since we moved the, um, Student Advisory Council meeting, do we wanna just keep the same schedule so that we're meeting next month? Or do we wanna push that off?
I worry about December. Um, so yeah, and we did, we moved it a week, so I think, although we did have our first meeting tonight, probably talk about that and members update. Anyway, I thought really well. Um, you know, we can ask, we're reaching out to them anyway about potential, so why don't we just ask them? I just, I always find December to be, but maybe it's not when you're a student, I mean, when you're not, when you're not the one making the magic happen. That's a good question, though, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that, anything else?
Trying to think, is that, uh, is that a concert night and stuff too?
I don't think so, I took pictures this year, yeah, cause I was very. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, I mean, I have to go to both. Okay, great, well then we, alright, if you have anything, any thoughts, just let me or Jay know. Alright, and we have the minutes from our last meeting.
Madam Chair. I move that school committee accept the minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor? All opposed, all abstaining, okay, we have four, zero, one, thank you, thanks Rebecca, great job. Uh, we should have a warrant.
Madam Chair. I move the school committee accept warrant marked W seventeen, which I keep saying W, but it stands for week seventeen, right? So, am I correct in that, or is it?
Yeah, I don't think it's weak.
It's not weak, it's not a week.
I think it's just code for warrant.
Just warrant seventeen, but is it, why is it seventeen, anyway, I'm just gonna keep saying W seventeen. Um, in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alright, motion carries five, zero, uh, no policy tonight, uh, member reports. I guess we're not meeting before the play, so I'll give a shout out, I guess, to come see the play at the high school, the weekend of the eighteenth. Eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth? Seventeenth, eighteenth, whatever that weekend is, seventeen, eighteen, nineteenth, uh, it's a Christmas story, um, I think the cheerleaders I saw just. Did something amazing as well, so congratulations to our cheerleaders, is that true? Yeah, they're always amazing, they won like, yeah. Well, I'm gonna shout out to the cheerleaders, yeah, so congratulations to them and to our fall sports teams, I think who are, are wrapping up.
I'll, um, give another plug for the, then, the class of twenty-four, Crafton Vendor Fair on that same weekend, um, come to the high school. Between ten and three, we're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have raffles, we're gonna have lots of vendors, we're filling up the gym and the commons, just like we did last year. With, uh, and stuffing it a little bit more, so that'd be good times.
Come for the, for the food trucks and the vendors and stay for the play, make it a day, but, awesome, okay, anything else? I think some of us are heading down to the Cape this week, so we'll have lots to report back from that, alright. Uh, no correspondence, we don't have to go into executive session, I will take a motion to adjourn. Second, motion made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, alright, good night, Grafton, happy Thanksgiving.